Okay, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 14th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck. Peiper.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Saran.
Here.
Vocal singer. That's 10.
That's a necessary quorum. All right. Second would be a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the broadcast and recording tonight. Item three is items to remove, edit, or change. Do we have anything for tonight?
No.
Okay, then we'll move right on to item number four, matters from the public for items not on the agenda this evening. I believe we have a few people here. Come on up.
Dinette McGrath, 407 Elm Street. I have two things. First, I would like to start out with, these are a few questions that I have from emails that I've sent back and forth over the past six months that have not been answered in regards to the BEI property Walgreens, Batavia Plaza. What is the timeframe that someone is required to address a code violation? Are there fines? Does a property owner get a pass because he or she are maintaining their other properties? If so, what example are you setting for the other property owners? After six months, we are now being told it will be another six months, a year in total. Is it really okay for our downtown, for the folks passing by going to the other surrounding businesses which are, by the way, excuse me, which by the way, a gentleman commented that he almost tripped in the area that I have brought to your attention? I'm hoping that we can find a compass to kind of figure all this stuff out. The next thing is, here's the 123 signatures, or the...
Thank you.
The change in the speed limit from 30 to 25 residential.
As far as the questions that you've got, Dinette, I'm going to try and have answers for those in the next week, where disconnects were, what's going on, and we'll try and figure that out, and I'll be back to you within a week. Okay?
Hi, Bill McGrath, 407 Elm Street, and former employee. I'm not going to repeat myself. I'm really trying to give you some new information because I have the luxury, being retired, of being able to spend some time looking at things while, you know, the staff just has, juggling a million things. I just wanted you to know, and I'll send all this out to you tomorrow, that the Illinois Vehicle Code says that any city can establish maximum speed limits on all streets within their limits and are not under the jurisdiction of the Department of the IDOT. And whenever any city, upon the basis of an engineering or traffic investigation, which they do not specify what the quality is, what the quantity is, in any way, shape, or form, determines that a safer speed could be lowered or higher, the corporate authorities can do that. Secondly, if you go to the IDOT site, and they have a written policy on the application of the Bureau of Operations, excuse me, the application of the Bureau of Operations policy to cities and counties. The Illinois Vehicle Code does not require local agencies to obtain department approval for speed zones on roads under their specific jurisdictions. While the procedures contained in this policy may be used for altering speed limits on any public highway, use of such procedures by local agencies is not required by statute. The next thing I learned is, I was doing some reading, there's a National Association of City Transportation officials, and I guess my head's getting hung up on the 85% thing, which I think has just become so a common way of talking, but according to these folks, they say the percentile-based speed limit settings, they fail at keeping people safe because they keep a permanently moving target based on current human behavior, not safety. There's two issues at play. First, percentile-based models are designed to respond to the extremes. When enough people drive faster than the set percentile, the model rewards them by saying that the posted speed should be increased. Secondly, studies have found that people decide how fast to drive based not only on the design, but cues such as posted speed and other driver speeds. A growing body of research shows that drivers base their decision, at least partially, on a posted speed limit, and when they see a higher speed limit and see the resulting increased speed of their peers, they drive faster too. Lastly, I sent a FOIA to our peers, and I mentioned some of those before, and the results. Geneva adopted 25 mile per hour limit in 1989. There was no trap, there was a traffic study of one collector road, and following that, they changed all their residential roads at 25 miles per hour. St. Charles adopted 25 miles per hour in 1989. No studies were furnished. Neberville reduced its residential roads beginning in 1991, and added new streets as recently as 2021. The ordinances I examined say that Neberville relied on its home rule authority as a basis for the change. They did a speed study of a single representative street before recommending a neighborhood reduced speed limit program. Warrenville has had a 25 mile per hour limit in residential areas since 1969. Warrenville isn't even home rule. Sycamore set a speed limit at 25 miles per hour in 2015 and 16. There were no studies given me in response to my FOIA. West Chicago set its residential limits at 25 miles an hour in 2000. There were no studies given me in response to the FOIA. Now, honestly, they could have destroyed, if they're old enough, they can destroy all that, but they didn't have anything for me. North Aurora set its residential limits at 25 in 1998 and produced no studies. Wheaton reduced its residential limit to 25 miles an hour in January of 2018. Interestingly, it changed the residential speeds following a study only of the collector road system, something which is happening with our roads right now. The city of Aurora reduced its speed limit in 2006, relying on its home rule authority, and noted that it had studied a quote "sampling" of streets, yet reduced the limits for all residential streets. None of the cities in response to my FOIA included any communications with IDOT. So my conclusion is that the city is a home rural municipality, has the authority to reduce the residential limit to 25, and since it has commissioned a collector study, you could choose to combine any action with that. The costs, I think, have been mentioned. The costs are very reasonable. The fact is that posting signs at our entries stating that, quote, "Unless other marked, the residential speed limit is 25 and is sufficient," it would give the staff whatever time it would take to swap out new signs, even if it took a few years. Lastly, I agree with Chief and Mr. Weiss that reduction nor enforcement or citizen activity on their own can reduce speed as much as we like. In my neighborhood, people have begun parking their cars on the streets to slow people down. It's clear that there's a much higher profile of enforcement recently, and that is greatly appreciated. What's left is giving a clear signal to anyone using our streets, whether they be residents, delivery people, or visitors, that Batavia expects reasonable use of its local streets.
Anybody else from the public for matters not on the agenda? Okay, we'll go then to the consent agenda.
Colin, I just want to mention that I have arrived.
Oh.
Thank you.
I wrote you down at 7:08, so you're here.
I'm here.
We're good. Is Dan?
Yes, Dan is on, and he has his hand up.
Go ahead, Dan.
Before we move on to consent agenda, I just wanted to make a remark regarding what Bill McGrath had just presented. I had also been pretty vocal about opposing any changes to speed limits for all the reasons he had alluded to and what Sash had certainly presented to us. I feel like my opinion is kind of evolving on this now. After listening to what Bill had researched, I had the opportunity to speak with him beforehand about what he was presenting this evening. I did my own independent research, and I do feel that this is something that at least needs to be brought back to the committee. It's something we should discuss as a full committee. The roadblocks that I fought were in place, may not be there, and an opportunity for us to review this is absolutely worth it. I guess, I feel weird saying this, but we're not believers we thought we were on this issue, and it may not be that difficult to achieve. And I guess I would ask if there's anyone else in the council that would join me. I think this is something worthy of further review. I appreciate Bill and Dinette's continued efforts to get the pulse of the town, to get research done on their own time. Bill, in his own right, has a legacy of serving the city very well, and I appreciate his passion. I know that recent events of the summer certainly touched their family and their neighborhood, but I think it's definitely worthy of committee discussion. So I'd ask if anyone else would like to join me. This is something to consider.
I'll second.
We've got a whole bunch of extra hands here, Dan. I think that's definitely something that we'll get on an agenda, fit in as soon as we can, to try to plan out, you know, how we want to attack that. Do we want to have a small committee, or do we want to just put together the information and bring it back and discuss it over a meeting, you know, and move forward with that and see where we want to go with it? Because I do think something that, you know, now that I've seen that and driven around and actually gone through most of the towns around us that have done that, I kind of notice a little difference in places that I've tried to pick up on what the traffic's actually like.
I'm certainly paying attention to. I first admit, I have a bit of a lead foot. I enjoy driving. I drive my car fast. There are places to do that, there are places not to do that. My neighborhood is not one of those places. I've been cited in my life before. I was cited as a teenager, and it was targeted enforcement, and a letter that went to my parents that changed some of my behavior, but as an adult, I still suffer from some of these issues. The number of people who are texting and driving is a much larger issue, separate issue, but certainly things that are worthy of a subcommittee or probably a task force because the community needs to be involved in this on some level. So thank you, everyone. I do appreciate it.
You know, frankly, I'm not sure, I know that it would take a lot longer to get to a decision that way, but I think it should start with a city council's decision. If all of you were in favor of moving forward in some way, then there really isn't a reason to set up a whole separate construct.
Yeah, I personally am not in favor of moving forward. Saying that neighboring cities went to 25 miles an hour doesn't mean anything to me. What matters to me is if accidents were reduced as a result. That's the metric that matters to me. That 5 miles an hour does not. When Mr. Weiss gave his presentation a few weeks ago, he gave out fantastic information that said that the speed changes had little to no impact on number of incidents, that the majority of the accidents that were happening, if not almost all of them, were because of people not paying attention. So we could switch to a 25 mile an hour speed limit and still have the same quantity of accidents, potentially. So what I would love to see are the metrics that say, does the change in speed make a difference in accidents? Because that's what brought this all to the fore in our discussions, where the accidents recently, and then the metrics that Weiss gave us, did not back up saying that reducing speed is going to help. And yet, the minute that that statistics was released to the group, five different people said we got to reduce speed, as if they did not hear these metrics. Give me those metrics. Show me that the speed change makes a difference, all for it. But if it's a speed change for the sake of the speed change, I'm not all for it. My two cents.
I guess I would say rebuttal to that is, the speed change reduces the severity of any accident. And that's the biggest thing we have to remember in a residential area, is if you can reduce that speed and reduce the severity of the injury, you're making progress. And yes, I'll agree that I think distracted driving is probably the biggest problem we have, and that may be something that we have to talk about as well. How do we handle that? Because that's, to me, the worst thing.
Yeah, that, to me, is the worst thing as well. I see that every day, every day.
I don't think these severe accidents have been in residential areas. It's been on the routes.
Collector routes.
I agree with Alderman Ayazi, and especially with Alderman Baron's point just now. Overgovernment for overgovernment is not my, not my thing.
All right, we're going to have a discussion about it. Okay? Okay. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Dan?
Indeed, the consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 23-126-R, approving task order number 22 with Trotter and Associates, Inc., in preparation for the phosphorus removal feasibility study, any amount not to exceed $21,300. Resolution 23-127-R, approving license agreement with C.C. Homes, City Apartments, for the water main repairs. Resolution 23-125-R, it's a request for extension, the expiration of the final plat for Deer Path and Main consolidation subsitation, variation from the subdivision regulations. Resolution 23-124-R, reviewing contract for legal services for traffic and ordinance violation prosecutions with Randall Jansen's Law Group. Resolution 23-130-R, authorizing intergovernmental agreement for participation in mutual aid box alarm systems made us. Resolution 23-129-R, approving a resolution accepting a plat of dedication at the southwest corner of Wilson and Prairie Street intersection, and, um, sorry? I would move that we approve the consent agenda as follows.
By Chanset, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Lancy.
Hi.
Beck. Peiper.
Hi.
Chanset.
Hi.
Sulfah.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Hi.
Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Uwer.
Hi.
Saran.
Hi.
I'll move on to item six, which is I'll open the public hearing on the 2024 annual Peggy, can you start that?
Peggy, do you ordinarily start that, or do we just see if there are members of the public who are here that would like to comment?
You open it, you open the meeting, see if there is public comment, and then you can close it.
Okay, sure. Do we have anybody here that would like to comment on the budget tonight? 2024 budget? Anybody online?
No.
Only when they want to complain. Okay. If we have no other comments, then I will close the public, or I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Sulfah, second by Malay. Voice vote, all those in favor?
Hi.
Closed. Okay. Public hearing is closed on the budget. Next would be number seven, ordinance 2361, annexing former railroad properties on Millview Drive and Newton Avenue. Can't believe we still have some down there.
We still, this is, we're getting to the end. This is the last in this particular area. There's four parcels that were isolated by the recent annexation of the Moose Lodge property, so they are all small railroad pieces. Oddly enough, none of these properties have an assessed valuation. It's a little bit unusual. Some of these railroad properties do have an assessed valuation, but these four actually do not pay any taxes currently. They would not pay taxes by virtue of the annexation. It's based on just assessed valuation, so if the township should assess it higher later on because of, you know, just gradual increases in value, then they would end up paying some kind of property tax, but they would not pay property tax by virtue of the annexation. So this would finish off all the properties that were in the railroad, former railroad right away in this area.
And are those owned by?
The adjacent owners.
Owners.
Yep.
Okay, so there's no sales or anything that has to happen with any of those, correct?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to get that out there, that that's the reality of those. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, if not, I'll make the motion that we approve, or we recommend to council, ordinance 2361, annexing former railroad properties on Millview Drive... 2361, annexing former railroad properties on Millview Drive and Newton Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Closed. That passes. Thank you. That can go on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay, up next is item number eight, which is ordinance 2358, conditional use for motor vehicle sales leasing new and used, internet-based, and 1805 Phelps.
Hi. Ron Barnaba of Barnaba Autosports has applied for a conditional use permit to operate a motor vehicle sales leasing new and used internet-based business in addition to his Porsche vehicle repair and restoration services. Mr. Barnaba is proposing to relocate his existing auto sales business from 1183 Pearson Drive to 1805 Phelps Drive, where he recently purchased the building. The proposed auto sales currently is and will continue to conduct, be conducted over the internet with customers coming to view vehicles by appointment only. The property provides ample parking for employees, visitors, and vehicles for repair services. The vehicle inventory associated with the auto sales business will be stored inside the building. Mr. Barnaba has operated his current business in Batavia since 2015 at 1183 Pearson Drive in several different tenant spaces. With the proposed relocation of his business to 1805 Phelps Drive, he must obtain a new conditional use permit. Staff during the review of this project has determined several conditions of approval be considered, which are included in draft ordinance 23-58. And by a vote of six to zero, the planning commission recommended that the city council approve this, subject to the conditions included in draft ordinance 23-58. And the applicant is here tonight, if you'd like to ask him questions.
Great. I guess the only thing I'd say is, I saw that landscaping and other stuff's already been done and.
So, yeah, the rear landscape areas was previously gravel. A previous tenant of the property put gravel down and encroached in that space. That's been restored to a mulched area, and plantings are coming in spring. The timing just didn't work out for this year.
That's fine. Okay, yeah, I've heard nothing but good things about them, Porsche dealers, so, great.
Thank you.
Glad you're expanding, glad you've got your own building now.
Yes.
I'm just starting one, so, no problem about it. Okay, there are no other questions. I'll make the motion that we send this to council, ordinance 2358, conditional use for motor vehicle sales leasing new and used, internet-based, at 1805 Phelps.
Okay.
Motion by Wolf, second by Lancy. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Closed. Okay, we'll be on the next council meeting, and you'll be all ready to go.
Thank you.
Okay, next is item number nine, which is ordinance 2359, conditional use permit for video gaming establishment in the downtown mixed-use district overflow at 144 West Wilson Street. Drew's got that.
Good evening. Get over here. Yes, as Alderman Wolf noted, this is a conditional use for video gaming for a proposed bar establishment at 144 West Wilson Street. This is a currently vacant space that the applicant, Brian Panazzo of Overflow Management, would be looking to open an overflow bar establishment. There would be video gaming offered at the bar, along with bar services. There would be the ability to order food from the Riverside Pizza in the same, in the shopping center, and consume pizza on premise at this location. The plans indicate that there would be up to five terminals. The applicant has noted that this might end up only being four, depending on space limitations. So the ordinance does recognize the ability to have up to five. The, there are a couple of conditions that I mentioned in the report, addressing some of the more standard items that we've required for video gaming operations. Additionally, there is a sign limitation that's been proposed to limit advertising of gaming on signage, just to avoid any conflation of the business being a gaming cafe. There's also some limitations specified to allow the building division and the fire department to determine final occupancy. Based on the current configuration of the space, there's only about, or there would be allowed 49 patrons in the space. There's also a conditional use, or there is a condition related to the conditional use. Essentially, a conditional use is good for a one-year period. The planning commission did recommend extending that to 18 months in order to allow the applicant to open, occupy the space, and operate for a year before operating or adding gaming into the mix. At the hearing, Mr. Panazzo did explain the proposed use, his comfort with the one-year period before operating gaming in this location. He did note the aspects of the business, such as hospital, providing hospitality or party space for the Riverside patrons to use, as well as creating a more adult-oriented environment for customers that might be waiting for a table, et cetera. He did note that it would be an investment of approximately $150,000 to do so. And when asked by one of the planning commissioners, he did note that he was looking for certainty that the gaming use would be allowed at this location before executing the lease. The planning commission did understand the need to do that, or they felt that was reasonable, did recommend the condition to allow the additional length of time, and did recommend approval by a vote of six to zero. And the ordinance before you does include all those conditions that were reviewed by the planning commission, and staff does recommend ordinance 2359 as presented.
Hey, does anybody have any questions? Tony?
Yeah, in the memo, you talked about the regulations limit the use to five machines. The partners on this already have five machines. Says it is a different LLC, but the businesses are connected via actual owners. What's the?
Sure, so, yeah, we did identify that in the memo, just as a, you know, discussion point for gaming, just generally. What is proposed would comply with our regulations. It is a separate business, a separate operation, so it is something that would be allowed under our regulations. But I, we did want to flag that just for discussion.
So the reason, yeah, I saw that, and I just thought, you know, was our intent to limit an owner to five machines? And now we're going to have owners that have 10 machines in our town.
So for instance, John Hamill owns two businesses, and I don't think that there was any intent to limit John Hamill to only being able to have five machines at one of his businesses versus being able to have it at each one of his businesses.
So, does he have? Have he had more than one business?
I don't think he has any in either business.
So, that was never an issue, because it was never discussed. If he never came and said, hey, I want 10 machines.
That's personal, though. I mean, it would, the machines supplement the business, not the person.
He's sort of, it's based on the 10 number of the business.
Yeah. And if I own two businesses in town, and one was a restaurant with a bar in it, and the other one was just a bar, and I wanted to have gaming machines in both, I would have separate LLCs for both of them, so that way I could have gaming in both of them. That's how it's done. I mean, that's just the reality of it.
Have someone come in here with a bunch of establishments and have a basically, you know, 20, 30 slot machines in our town.
I don't think we're going to go much further than we are right now.
I'm just bringing it up.
The way it's headed.
I think our intent was, we want, we were going to do this, and it was going to be limited. And here we are. You know, there was the gaming cafe idea that, Mary, you talked to us about that and said, this is coming if we're not careful for that. And I don't see how this is any different than that.
I think it's completely different for them, because they're going to serve food in it, from a full-fledged restaurant.
Same restaurant that has machines already, the same company that has machines already.
LCC, different 10 number.
Yeah, but they're.
Two different places.
They're operating with the same employees.
I think the core concern is, what's stopping a business from just kind of creating a shell company to expand their offerings and just rent that space as like a sublease, for instance?
If somebody wants to open up five businesses in town?
Yeah.
You're going to say no to that?
If they're just.
Because it's one owner?
If they're just basically there as a loophole, kind of, yeah, actually, in that case.
They'd have to have a liquor license and establish themselves as an actual tavern and/or restaurants for a period of one year. And paying rent on an establishment for a period of one year has been an investment that, when the people who own gaming cafes call and ask me about what the rules are in our town, when they hear that, they hang up the phone. They're no longer interested in establishing here.
So the one-year clause helps prevent that?
It does.
And that's what we, I think we learned that right off the bat when we decided to go with gaming, was that that was really a stop for most places, that if you had to have the license and it had to be enforced for a year, you just couldn't do it.
I have one thing. The applicant is here tonight to answer any questions. He did mention to me that, you know, there are, it is a different set of partners at each, with each business. You know, he is a common person in both, but not necessarily the full, you know, it's not the same exact partners in both.
Their books don't touch. The books are separate. So, if, at overflow, you can't go over to Riverside and take their vodka to go sell, there would be a transfer of money, almost like we're selling you that type of thing. So, it's not like they're going to be able to take advantage of what's been purchased by Riverside.
Correct. Yeah, the hearing, the applicant did note that, you know, a pizza sale is going to be a Riverside pizza sale. It's not, you know, it's not, the billing and everything like that, it's not through the overflow establishment.
Chris, go ahead.
Just some comments. I know there's been lots of concerns about these so-called gaming cafes, and I think kind of stole my thunder there by pointing out that with the one-year conditional use permit, obviously that's not occurred yet, where somebody just comes in and wants you to just have a bunch of slot machines sitting in, you know, a 500-square-foot place, and that's their business. Also, there's been some concerns about the aesthetics of the situation, and I just want to point a few things out. There's seven tavern holders in this town, and there's 24 restaurant liquor license holders. That's 31 establishments. Three of the seven tavern holders have gaming. Three of the 24 restaurant liquor license holders have gaming. There's two fraternal organizations, the Moose and the VFW. And there's one entertainment center, Funway. As for aesthetics, Rosati's, let's just talk about on the main drag. Everybody's worried, there's been some worries about the main drag and driving through town. Rosati's has a sign in the window, no banners. Then you go down the street a little bit more, you have Wilson Street Tavern. There's a sign on the second floor, no banners. Go down a little bit further, you have Bulldog Cellar. There's a sign in the window, no banners. Riverside, there's no signs at all. Until you walk in there, you don't even know it's there. Route 31, there's going to be one place, JT's, no signs, no banners. You're not even going to know until you get in there. VFW and the Moose, their fraternal organizations are totally different, but irregardless, no signs and no banners. Funway, again, totally different entertainment center, no signs, no banners. There's a signs for bowling and other things, but not for gaming. And then let's look at some of the bars that are not on the main route. Crosstown Pub, people can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there's any signs or, I know there's no banners, I don't think there's any signs there either.
There is one sign, they're the only ones who have an animated sign.
Is it?
It's behind the rooster.
Okay.
So unless, I mean, it's about 100 yards off of the street. Unless you are literally turning your head and look behind the rooster, you can't see it. Because I did this scientific study as well, Chris, so I'm glad that you're bringing this up.
Thank you.
But mine's more scientific, I'll get to it.
Yeah, I got you. I'm trying my best here, you know? So, we have three of the seven, three of the seven tavern holders in town, and you have a sign at Bulldog Cellar, sign in the window. If that's, is that considered a tavern, or is that the restaurant?
Tavern.
Tavern, okay. And then you have Wilson Street, a sign in the window. But then, you know, the restaurant liquor license, Rosati's, a sign in the window. And then you have, that's it, I believe, no other signage. So, really, we're looking at, out of 31 potential establishments of tavern holders and restaurant liquor license holders, there's six. That's 19%. That speaks against proliferation. There's no banners, there's not a single gaming cafe in this town. I don't see anything regarding aesthetics. And I understand what some of those concerns are, because I frequent places like Joliet and Rock Island for various counties I go to for all of my court calls. And there are these gaming cafes. There's actually ones where, there's one in Rock Island right across from the courthouse. It's Play Slots, Play Slots, While You Wash Your Socks. It's a laundry place that has slot machines. So, and that's right across from, right across from the good old courthouse there. But, so I mean, there's big banners for that, too, right along the street. And I can understand the aesthetics of that, and it doesn't, and it's also a big old billboard on the, on the wall of the building that has these phrases that, about the rhyming with the slots. So, I understand that. But in Batavia, when we're looking at what we're talking about here, the aesthetics, signs are minimal at best. There are no banners, there's no gaming cafes. It's 19% of the possible tavern holders and restaurant liquor license holders. This new establishment would again be just like JT's and Riverside. There'd be no signs anywhere, until you get inside, then you'd see it. So, with that in mind, I don't see what the issue is, or what the problem is with allowing gaming machines, not only for this establishment, but for any other establishment that wants to come into town, to supplement their income, assist in them surviving in this town, when times might be slow, or to assist them in just covering overhead. Again, I equate this to, they already have a liquor license, I mean, and we're not like the town in Footloose, where we're going to ban dancing and ban liquor and everything else. I mean, you know, there's liquor already in town, there's, you can go to any gas station you want and get whatever you want in terms of lottery tickets. You can go to the fraternal organizations and do the pull tabs. I mean, gaming is just, I don't know what, I don't know what the prejudice is against the gaming, especially in the way I've set forth here, where there's really nothing to point out that we're some big gaming town that come to Batavia and play slot machines because there's banners and signs and gaming cafes. It's just not the case. And, you know, again, I'll reiterate my point I made earlier about this. I believe that, you know, I'm just trying to be pro-business here. Basically, from what I understand, without the gaming, this place is not going to occur. And I drove by Riverside this weekend to do my own scientific survey, and it was packed, and there's nowhere to sit, and there was nowhere to go. People were standing outside. So, the whole point of what I understand this place to be is, you know, you can go down there and you can wait for a table, or you can just hang out if you don't feel like hanging out town at Riverside and waiting. So, I just see this as something that, I don't have any problem with it. And again, I'm pro-business for Batavia, and it appears that this would be a definite bonus for the downtown. It would be a bonus for the area over here. There's an empty space that's not very large, that nobody's tried to get into yet, so I just really don't see a problem with this. And I'm going to vote yes and make a motion to do so when the time comes.
Dan, you want to say something?
I do, thank you. Two points. One, we do need to tread carefully when, when we talk about LLCs. As a banker, experienced as a banker, and as an LLC owner, I recognize that there are different needs of an LLC, and it is possible to have multiple LLCs. I myself plan on opening an additional one or two, because of the different interests involved. I've had clients before that I advise them to not consolidate their business, but actually to proliferate under different tax IDs, because of the structure of their business, and each one of them having competing interests. It's important to understand that there are sometimes varied ownerships, as will be the case in mine, and they have different business models, so they have to be treated as our government treats them, as wholly separate citizens, corporate citizens of that, but they are truly separate entities with the same rights as another human being, anyone of us sitting at the table. So if we have an LLC with a different tax ID, we need to treat them as a wholly separate applicant in order to treat them fairly. Secondly, I am sounding like a broken record when it comes to this. I do not enjoy the proliferation of gaming in town. I do regret my initial vote, but I also respect it is the law of the land. We have invited gaming into our town, and so therefore, any illegal applicant who applies for a license, we need to pass this. There's no question, if we were to deny this license today... If we were to deny this license today, I believe that there's recourse. I believe that they would have absolutely reason to take exception with a no vote on our part. If we're going to turn into a place where we don't want to become, I might encourage us to pull the ordinance from a town like Villa Park. I had a recent job there and nearby. That's the proliferation I think that we're all looking to avoid where every other shop seems to be a gaming place with the banners, with the lights and whatnot. There seems to be more gaming establishments than there are businesses that are there. I don't know how that's possible, but empirically that's what it feels like. I don't think we're there yet. But this is something that needs to be remanded to committee for its own discussion if there is support to stop the proliferation or put additional impediments in place for these types of applications. We should discuss that. But having the drawn-out discussion that we have makes us appear anti-business, although we're not. And these businesses, as they are growing and asking for permission to do some of the, we've given them permission to do with inside of our code, is something we not understand. We do need to look at it with scrutiny, but the level of scrutiny that we're placing on them now seems, seems wrong. There's got to be a better way to do this. If this is something that needs to go to committee, so we will discuss. And I do recall being part of that group asking for it, to ask to discuss this further. Let's, but until this time we change the laws, we, I'm not trying to stop speech here, but we should probably tone down our rhetoric in general because we have to pass this here, fortunately or unfortunately, no matter what side we fall on. And I've evolved in my thinking on this as well, is a ceremonial no vote is not useful coming from me right now. I've already expressed very publicly that I don't support this idea, but I will wait until the laws of land changes. So I will change my intended ceremonial no vote to go along with the yeses. That's the right thing to do and support this process as it moves forward. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm very much currently where Dan is at. This is already an ordinance we have in place. And even though I would like to see it capped in our downtown sooner than later, I agree with Alderman, Chanzen that this is what we currently have in place. And I would also like to bring this to a future COW discussion.
I think we were going to do that end in January so that all of the current license holders could be notified and make time for that to participate in the discussion if they so wished.
Anybody else? I guess I'll just throw one more thing in there. I've yet to have a complaint ever about gambling, about the video machines in this city. Never had a complaint. So just to put that out there, I wonder if anybody else has or anybody else has come in and said, I'm never going in that restaurant because they have that, or I'm never going to go in that bar because they have it. I just have never heard that.
I have. I've had people say they won't go to places because of that. They won't go into JT's because as soon as you walk in the door, it's in your face.
My point is that I don't want that image for Batavia. While it's not there now, I'm seeing creep because we've had this discussion before. We did say, oh, it's conditional use, so we can have total control. But every time this comes up, it's like, okay, we're going to expand a little more, expand a little more. And that's my fear. And it's not about being the moral police, as you brought up before, Chris. It's about not being the image I want for Batavia and I see creep happening and that's why I continue to bring this up.
I spoke nothing about morality tonight. I spoke of numbers.
You have previously though.
I spoke of numbers tonight.
Last time we talked about that, exactly, but.
Well, I don't, I think bringing up, I don't think there's any rebuttal to my numbers. So.
No, my rebuttal is, it might not be there now, but it's increasing.
Where, I wasn't here for, where did we start and where is it increased to?
So initially, when we passed the ordinance, I believe that we had about five applications pretty quickly thereafter. I want to say it was in 2018 that we passed our ordinance. And then, you know, it just hasn't grown very much since then.
Five applicants, did we put a cap on the amount of machines?
No.
Do we have a cap in place or is it just theoretical at this point in time?
Under the state statute, a tavern or a restaurant may only have six machines. That changed, I think, one year after the state of Illinois allowed video gaming, but we chose not to increase that in our ordinance and left it at five machines.
I would just point out that in terms of the five, I know at least the Moose was not included originally because we just annexed them. I don't know if the VFW.
No, the VFW I don't think was either off right off the bat.
We've got 10 total locations right now.
Right, but the V, I mean, two of them are fraternal organizations. One's an entertainment center.
And as far as expansion or contraction, we actually had one that we lost.
Yeah, one that we lost.
Lost there, so.
AquaViva originally had it and just decided it wasn't for them.
The Moon never had it.
Yes, the Moon had it.
Oh, they did. So then we lost two licenses.
And that's why JT thought that they would be able to have it.
That's right.
We haven't expanded our total number of machines since day one.
Really?
One more.
Yeah. And one of the things we did do is after the initial creation of the license, we did then add a zoning regulation in regards to the condition use. So that's why they're in front of us today. So some of the applicants, the original applicants are working under the prior code essentially, you know, where they don't have, like JT's Tavern, for example, they did not have a conditional use under the full moon. So that, those still exist and those continue until they lapse. After that, then they would have to get a conditional use. So that's where we are at that.
And I believe this is, this will be the fourth that has received conditional, or would be going through the conditional use process. So we've had a few since that time go through that process.
Well, I definitely think, you know, we need to come back and have the discussion. And I think it's right to do it after we have all the new license holders and then notice them and then let them come in and talk to us as well. Because I think that's a very important part of this, is to understand the reality of what businesses see in this so that we understand that as we move forward with it.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2359, conditional use permit for a video gaming establishment in the DNU Downtown Mixed Use District, Overflow 144 West Wilson Street.
Second.
I, Sova, second by Ayazi. Roll call, please.
Sova.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
No.
Uwe.
No.
Saran.
Aye.
Vocal singer. Lancy.
Aye.
Beck. Piper.
No.
Chanzen.
Aye.
Eight yes. Eight yes.
Eight yes, three no. Okay. All right, that'll go on to the council with positive recommendation for the next council meeting. Okay. Up next then would be item number 10, which is Resolution 23121R approving task order number five with V3 for an amount not to exceed $85,950 to complete preliminary and design engineering for Safe Roots to School project along Republic Road, Webster Street, and Blaine Street. Hello, Rahat.
Thank you so much. So this project was discussed in two prior COW meetings on June 27th and July 11th. Based on those discussions, we have, if you remember, you asked me to go and mark out the driveways, where the sidewalk is going to be. We marked it out right after July meeting. And since then, we had a meeting with IDOT and FHWA and kind of got a better picture of what they want us to do. One of the things that they want us to do is hold a public meeting because it's changed to a neighborhood. So they want us to have an open public meeting and we have scheduled it for December 14th, 2023, at 5:00 PM. So with that information, I have sent out letter with the layout to the residents about two weeks ago saying this project will be discussed tonight. And also if they are not able to come tonight, they will have another chance on December 14th to come and provide their opinion or comments about the project. So, and I have also gone out last Thursday to refresh those markings on the driveways so that if anybody wanted to have any discussion or have any comments, they can see where the sidewalk is going to be. Now, the markings are kind of preliminary. We have an idea where it's going to go, but when we get to the design level, that's when you exactly know where it's going to be. But it's going to be within a couple of feet. And then it's all going to be within right of way. There is no tree removal. Actually, if you remember, one of the discussion point was trees getting impacted. And that's why we moved the first block of sidewalk on Republic Road from McKee to Illinois to the east side rather than on the west side because that's something came out of Tree Commission's recommendation because they said the trees can get harmed. So we moved it to the east side on that block. So that's Republic and we, I haven't really heard any comment about the Blaine Street or the Webster Street sidewalk. Seems like everybody's okay with that. So with that, now that we have better idea from IDOT, what they want to see, actually it's kind of outrageous what they want to see for $250,000 sidewalk. They want us to do environmental study and it just, it's to a point, we are going to go through this, but this is a discussion topic. Maybe we'll bring it back to you because we have applied for another Safe Route to School project. If we get that, we'll probably bring it to you. We'll have hard numbers from this project saying how much it cost us to the preliminary engineering, design engineering. Is it something worth for us to go through all the hoops to get the money? And by the time you get the money, you're spending that much money. So are we feeding the consultant our money, which we could use and build the sidewalk like this year? So it's something to worth discussing. So we are going through it because we are already half the way in. What's the point of backing out now? So that's something, if we get future money, we'll definitely discuss it with you.
Have we already spent money on this?
I'm sorry?
Have we already spent money on preliminary engineering?
Yeah, we have, for preliminary engineering, so far we have spent $27,000. That's to, just to do the layout and survey work.
With another 90 here.
Now around $85,000.
Half of what we're going to end up getting.
Exactly. And then, then we have to hire a phase three consultant because these are the things that we don't do every day. They can navigate through the IDOT and the paperwork better. So by the time you spend the money, that's, and the amount of staff time and other things that go with all that, it just.
If we're not doubling our money up to get the sidewalk, I don't know that it's worth it. Staff time and everything else to go through all those hoops to get to that point. But if it is double.
And two things, like I have had discussion with some other cities and they're like, it's just so much, you know, headache that we don't even apply for it. And consultants are the same way. For $250,000 is just a lot of headache on their part either. So as I said, in our meeting with IDOT was very frustrating, like all of us. The consultant asked, we're like, what are they asking? Like I, we had to go to each of these locations and from the locations, we had to walk to the school, school door. They want us to make sure that all the way to the school door is ADA compatible. That means if somebody, it's a good thing, you know, I mean, that somebody on a wheelchair can get to school, but they were telling us that if the school door, like up to the door, if it is not compatible, then we will be on the hook to.
Do that.
Do the improvement. We're like, why should the city go and make an improvement to the school when it's all right of way, Gary?
Oh, I just wanted, because you've already touched on it, but I wanted to reiterate to City Council that when we started this current Safe Roots to School project, many of these things that Rahat's talking about weren't on the, weren't on the table for IDOT. This came as a news to us during this meeting and our old Safe Roots to School program projects, we never had to do any of this. This is all, this is all new criteria that has come up during this project, which is why he mentioned that for our future project that we've already applied for, we really need to assess whether it's worthwhile or we just spend the money that we would spend on a consultant and instead just invest it in sidewalk.
Do you know, Gary, is this new, just this year or is this just a new edict out of?
So this is something going to be in the next funding cycle. Our guess is everybody's sitting on those seminar, everybody's hearing the same thing. And IDOT and FHWA is kind of making it a requirement. They are kind of like uploading it, saying you have to do it now, even though it's not a requirement. So.
Something that we need to know so that when we go down to talk to IDOT or we have communication with them, that we try to work on that from the legislative side.
Right.
To try to reduce that burden because that's crazy.
Yeah.
You know, if we're going to fight, you know, put our staff through that to try to get what should be free money and a better situation for, you know, pedestrian traffic, I don't know why we have to fight for that.
I would say our reps need to be aware of that too because.
Right.
It's basically making the whole, the whole program defunct. What's the point of having it?
And they have so many other things that they need to focus on. They don't need to focus on how many steps you have to jump through to put sidewalks in.
And it's not only the steps. It's like the environmental process, processing is now taking nine months because they don't have people to look at all the backlog of paper. So it's not fair to us when we'll be digging only eight inches that you have to do all sorts of environmental clearance and submit the paperwork and wait nine months for them to answer us. It's just too much paperwork and too much red tape. So having said that, we have a better idea and we asked V3, who did the initial survey work and layout work for us, that give us a proposal, you know what is required. And they gave us a proposal of $85,950 to complete the preliminary engineering and the design engineering and go through the bidding process. I did put in, we have a master services agreement, that's why it's a task order. I did put in June 2024 as our deadline to go to the bidding, but it all depends on IDOT. They are taking longer. We know that. So we're still hoping by end of next year, we'll have the sidewalks in.
Just out of curiosity, if we were just going to go out and put sidewalks in ourself, what would we spend on engineering? Would we spend half of that or would we spend?
Zero.
We'd spend zero.
Yeah.
Because it would be done in-house.
Yep. We just put in the Madison State sidewalk. We did the design in-house. We put it out for bid. We constructed it. It's all in.
Okay.
It was done in three months.
Question I wanted out there. Okay. All right, does anybody have any?
We are paying, we're going to get paid for a lot of this back from FAU.
That's $250,000, but by the time we get done, we'll probably spend 175.
That will be covered by this.
No. No, this, this is not covered. Only the construct.
Construction.
Their maximum amount is 250. So if you end up in spending 400,000, you can only get back 250.
There's Kamala Dobbs who runs that program in Chicago. I know her very well and she told me that this project was fairly well-covered by whatever you're expecting you're going to get here.
250 is their limit. That's the Safe Route.
Okay, well, I mean, whatever it is, we'll get that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But I'm also saying that for 175, we could have put in most of the sidewalk in.
Spending 85 grand here just to do the design.
Well, as I just say, I think thanks to Rahat's efforts, we're in a pretty good spot as far as getting this thing mostly funded by CMAP as far as the federal monies go, so.
Are you talking about the Prairie and Wilson? I'm not, not this, right?
Talking about the sidewalk and the railroad cross.
Oh, no, no, that's a different project. This is just the Safe Route to School project. That, that's, yeah, that, we are opening the bid on Friday.
Sounds like they're ready to.
Fund it.
Fund it.
Yes.
That sounds good.
That's real good news.
And just want our quick follow-up because I know we had these concerned residents. And you went out and you spray painted where the sidewalk would be because they were worried about their driveway length. I'm assuming that you did that, you just mentioned you didn't hear any other complaints, so no complaints.
Nobody has reached out. As I said, I have sent a letter about two weeks ago notifying about this date. And for the public meeting, we'll be publicizing it on our website. We'll be putting it on the newsletter. There will be a Daily Herald advertisement for voice.
I have no doubt it was advertised and I know that you showed the picture showing the paints to show, I mean, people are on full notice.
If you drive by, you'll be able to see the frame.
Yeah, full notice, okay. Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah.
I have no doubt it was advertised. And I know that you showed the picture showing the paints to show, I mean, people are on full notice.
If you drive by, you'll be able to see the paint.
Yeah, full notice. Okay. Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments? Not, I'll ask for a motion to recommend a council resolution 23121R, approving task order number five with V3 for an amount not to exceed $85,950 for complete preliminary and design engineering for Safe Routes to School project along Republic Road, Webster Street, and Blaine Street.
So moved.
Second.
That was, you were in Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Malley? Okay, we're good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Consent agenda?
And then next is item number 11, which is resolution 23122R, authorization to buy insurance for property liability and excess workers' compensation. You want to go through that?
Sure. Peggy has a memo attached to this agenda, which shows that our property and liability insurance numbers came in pretty good, just about a 5% increase there. And on the medical insurance side, once again, IPBC is proving to be a very good decision for the city to have gone to that program for our insurance, just a 2% increase there. So really good numbers on insurance. We went out to bid, and we have decided to place our liability and property insurance with Travelers this time.
Just to clarify on that, the liability is staying with our incumbent, and only the property is changing.
Sorry. George.
Again, thanks for the work to get that where it is. And, you know, it sounds good that it's 2%, better than most, most other ones I've heard of lately for private insurance. Okay, no questions. I'll ask for a motion to send the council resolution 23122R, authorization to buy insurance for property liability and excess workers' compensation.
Move.
Second, the insurance.
Yes, we do.
Malley, second by Solfa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. So I'll move on to item number 12, which is resolution 23119R, expressing official intent regarding capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of one or more obligations to be issued by the city of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage Counties, Illinois.
You can take that one as well. As you know, the wastewater treatment plans, expenses have come in much higher than were originally expected. And therefore, our IEPA loans, which we have been fortunate enough to receive over the course of this project, this time will be insufficient to pay for Phase 2A of the project. And so while we will use those loan proceeds for the initial costs of the program toward the end of the program, for those that exceed the IEPA loans, we will have to issue bonds. And it was the recommendation of our bond counsel that rather than wait until that point, that we pass ordinance at this point, pass this resolution at this point, expressing our official intent to, that our expenditures would be reimbursable from the proceeds of one or more bonds that we would issue.
And just for information for more people on the council, this is a more drawn-out process than just saying, okay, we're going to go out and bond out for this. There's set steps we have to go through each time to do that. And there, I'm sure there's timeframes and requirements on each one of them. So this is literally one of the first steps we do when we do that. Ken?
Can I ask a question? Why do you think that they would make a recommendation is for us to purchase them now when we don't need them? Is it because of interest rates or?
It isn't even that we're going to purchase them. This is just a resolution expressing our intent. So we won't be issuing them until much closer to the time that we need them.
Okay, thank you.
It's just a long, drawn-out process. And then
Right.
All the steps that are there, we'll do this three or four more times before we ever get close to
So this is just a normal?
Yep.
Like, even if we needed them tomorrow, we'd still have to go through this process and draw it out? And you just said that, but I didn't, I didn't connect it, so I'm sorry.
That's why I'm trying to explain it, because it's something that I didn't really understand when I first heard it, the first time we did it. And I was like, why do we have to do it this way?
Well, I was just, in my head, as you were talking, I just kept my, what was the reason? But as you were explaining why, so.
This is Peggy. I can just add a little bit of clarification to it. So when you issue general obligation bonds, usually you don't, you, you issue the bonds before you do the construction. And in this case, we may issue the bonds after the construction of certain items have already been completed. So we have to state before they're constructed that we intend to reimburse ourselves. You're only allowed to reimburse yourselves so much after the fact. So this is just making sure that we state it now, so we don't have to worry, was this constructed before we issued the bonds or after?
So if somebody donated $40 million for that, then we'd be like, well, then we don't need it.
Wouldn't have to do it.
Exactly. Then we wouldn't have to.
We're not obligated. We're just expressing an intent.
So there is a possibility that we may not take out the 38 million, like, construction costs could go down by some miracle.
Sure.
I know, I'm just
Are the EPA regulations, we wouldn't have to do it something?
Or somebody donate 38 million dollars?
About the 38 million.
Yes, this is, this is what would be needed over and above the 38 million, is what Peggy just said. Because the IEPA loan is the 38 million. Which I want to point out, that IEPA actually agreed to increase our loan amount when we demonstrated a greater need for this phase. So it's an incredible program that allows municipalities to, at a very low interest rate, to complete projects like this. I mean, it really is an incredible program. So we're very grateful to be participants in that.
Any other questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend a council resolution 23119R, expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of one or more obligations to be issued by the city of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage County, Illinois.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. And that can go on, or on consent agenda. All right. Item 13 is ordinance 2352, our 2023 tax levy.
So with regard to these next three ordinances that have to do with the tax levy, it would be my recommendation that we table these items to November 28th, because we have not yet published the compensation listing. And that would ordinarily be done before we would vote on passing the full budget. And so it makes sense for all of those items to be done on the same evening.
Okay, so items 13, 14, 15, and 16, all the, the SSA's and the tax levies?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to do a motion to table or just table?
I think it would be wise to do a motion to table it.
So moved for 13 through 16.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
And then we would have that on the 28th, and then hopefully be passing our budget at the city council meeting on December 4.
Right. All right. And then that takes us up to item number 17, which is ordinance 2357, amending the city code relating to water usage rates and service charges.
If it's okay with city council, I'll cover items number 17 and 18 at the same time. They deal with, as Aldrin Wolf just said, related to water usage rates. And the other one relates to sanitary sewer usage rates. In the 2024 budget, it's contemplated that rate increases would occur for both the water and the sanitary sewer utilities in order to fund projects as well as maintain adequate reserves. In my memo, I did outline some large projects that are on the horizon for the water and wastewater utilities, just for the general public's benefit. The mayor mentioned earlier, the Prairie and Wilson intersection project. There'll be a significant water main replacement associated with that. Lead service line replacements. As you know, we received the $4 million from the state, which was a forgivable loan. But now we are going to be going out and actually bonding for additional lead water service line replacements. South Batavia Avenue water main replacement and the Pine Street water main replacement are coming in future years. And on the wastewater side, as we just discussed, 40-plus million dollar Phase 2A wastewater treatment facility improvements. And then again, in future years, there's a Holy Cross force main replacement. And we have really annual ongoing capital projects associated with sanitary sewer rehabilitation. So the recommendation in the budget was for a 3% water usage rate increase and an 8% sanitary sewer usage rate increase. And that is what staff is recommending via ordinance 2357 and 2356.
You have any questions? I know when we tried to plan this out, everything looks like it's worked out the right way. I mean, reserves have gone up and down, but we've tried to keep at pace with what we're doing.
Although none of us like rate increases,
Right.
We have been able to keep slow and steady increases, as opposed to hitting the rate pairs with large sums in one year.
There are no questions. I'll make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 2357, amending the city code relating to water usage rates and service charges.
Second.
Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, that passes. And then we'll move on to item 18, which is ordinance 2356, amending the city code relating to sanitary sewer usage rates. I'll make the motion that we recommend that to council. Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay, then we will move on to item number 19, a discussion on adding personnel in the IT department, application specialist. Howard, welcome.
Evening, everybody. Sorry, I was looking for Well, I have a draft job description I'll bring up after the discussion. So there is no vote on this item. It's discussion only. I guess if, if you don't feel, or you do feel that this is needed or not needed, you can address that during the budget discussion. But I just wanted to bring up, you know, that every year, we do add more and more technology. And there's more equipment, there's more software, there's more need for resources to manage all that. A few months back, you approved getting a technician, which is now here, his name is Mike Mustard, came with 26 years' experience from the St. Charles School District. He's still kind of getting up to speed. He's been here about four weeks now. So we're starting to see him, you know, figure out where things are and be able to help us in many ways. But, you know, when you look at some of the projects that, that happen from year to year, and in my memo, most recently, I suggest or mention that, you know, we did move forward with electric SCADA, tanless meter reading, and squad cameras, Qualtrics, digital signage. So when you, when you think about that year after year, and with the staff we have, you know, we've, we've added one additional staff member. We're one staff member over from where we were in 2008. So that's when the recession hit, we had to let go of a few staff members. So we've added those, and we've added one more in over 10 years. But now, year after year, we keep building the footprint of software, technology, and additional requests. And what happens is we get to a point where we end up with so many projects that every one of them then seem to move at a snail pace, or they just stop at some point. The people that we have, myself and Todd, Todd Davis, who's the Assistant IT Director, we've always helped implement and manage software applications. And we're having a hard time getting to them right now. Some of the other people that we hire are more technicians. We do have one person that helps with laser fiche. But other than that, it's been Todd, myself, helping manage departments with implementation supportive software. So this position is a little bit different than the position that we hired last month and four years ago, when we brought Ed Larson on. And as we look forward, even in 2024, some of the items, I know you haven't approved yet, but we're looking at additional MFA for police, surveillance cameras for the downtown area, more mobile devices. We had to move a project from this year to next year for police forensic storage. And when you start taking all those items, and year after year, add those to what we do, and add those to our plate, it gets difficult to manage. So now, as projects slow down because we can't get to them, it really just holds up people in many departments. And they're not able to use the technology that, that we may have and haven't been able to implement yet. We, we work with consultants, we work with other implementers, but we, many times, we have to be there. Those people also need to be managed. So, and then, and I will bring up, and we'll hear from Max in a little bit, but you've all gone through the strategic plan. And there are a number of items in the strategic plan. And granted, if we don't do those, I still feel like we're going to need somebody with this skillset to help us get up to speed. We've got at least, I would say, a couple-year project list of applications that people are asking for, and we haven't been able to get to. So with that said, I'd like to just open up a discussion, see if you guys have questions, how you feel about it, if you need more information.
Or would like to make comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that in both the employee survey that we did, while in most areas, we were doing quite well compared to our benchmarks. One area that was noted for improvement was employees feeling like they had sufficient technology in order to do their job. And it's, you know, many things have been on the horizon, but as Howard indicated, due to a lack of resources and inability to be able to implement those things for employees. The other area where that came out was when we were having discussions for the strategic plan, that employees noted that the versions of the software that they were using were behind and needed to be upgraded. But it was, you know, Howard struggles with, these people need the implementation of a technology. Is that more important than getting on the most recent platform for an existing technology? And it's a shame to have to make trade-offs like that. But I know that that's something that he has to do in the prioritization of the work of his department, given the headcount and specialties of the individuals in his organization right now.
Yes.
Could you kind of give us a breakdown of what your current department looks like? Just a quick overview and the roles that each person plays? Because it sounds like there's you, and then there's Todd, who's the assistant, and then the technician that we brought in, and then the GSI guys. Am I missing somebody?
Yeah.
Or GIS or?
Well, now, our department has grown a little bit. So now we kind of have
So now we kind of have a GIS division, and we have two people there now. So we have Matt Stocking and we have Mike Kayman, who's our GIS coordinator or manager. On the other side of the equation are the IT people. So it's myself and Todd. And then we have Ed Larson, who's been here since 2019, and he's now our network administrator. And then we just hired Mike Mustard as our technician. So we have four people implementing IT projects.
And then who handles the security of the system?
Usually Todd. Todd has been doing that.
Okay.
So some of our roles, just so you know, some of our roles are changing at the moment because of bringing in Mike Mustard and trying to pass some of the equipment building and support functions to him. But we get so many requests, it's more than a one-person job. And we had, I think I told Laura Monday, we had 113 requests over the past 30 days. It's really too much for one person. And to try and cross-train, not everybody is skilled in every area when there's a request. So sometimes a request has to go to a specific person.
I think, I mean, that does, that helps me in, you know, definitely understanding that from the IT standpoint, even though you hear IT, everybody does pay, you know, does a particular role. And a lot of the software that's being implemented, where before it used to be supported by a lot of these companies, they're now saying, because they're making it a lot of really easy, where they're saying, but now you have to program it and you have to have that knowledge for it. And, you know, that puts more pressure on the people. So, you know, definitely hearing that and what the position is kind of more about, it's more of the applications and building the programs, you know.
We really could use somebody else with, Todd has some programming experience. I did years ago, but haven't really done much programming in ages. I'll make a few minor changes here or there. But we don't really have anybody else who can step up and handle those situations. So report writing, running or creating SQL queries to pull data out for people. We don't really have anybody besides Todd right now who can do those things.
I mean, once they're in place, they're great. But to get it there and then to train the people on top of that is...
And I did include a list, I mean, right off the bat. I mean, we could talk about online permits and laser fiche. We've had, we've been wanting to get more online permits out there for quite some time and haven't been able to. Laser fiche, we purchased about three or four years ago, but we've got, we've got a great FOIA system using laser fiche that's been successful from what I understand, though I haven't heard anything other than that. But we've only really been able to get two departments up on laser fiche. And we'd really like to get police, Public Works. We've had something in the budget for community development now for three years. We haven't been able to do it, whether it's them or it's us. It's, you know, and hopefully, you know, I know, Community Development, you guys have approved some additional positions for them. So hopefully, we'll be able to work with them over the next year or so and try and get that going.
Yeah, a couple thoughts. And this is for you and for all of the department heads, is that I guess what I kind of want to see is if we do a staffing increase in our companies, these are months-long discussions, and having to provide that information and make the decision over a period of time and be able to have more back and forth and then be able to ask some more questions like, hey, can I see the ticket counts over the last three months or six months and see how the new technician has helped and see is that driving things down would be an example. And having the metrics, we talked a lot about the KPIs and the strategic plan, it's hard for me to make a decision on a very short memo. And so that's kind of one thing, a more of a holistic thing, that we talk about this and we have this in midsummer. So that when it comes time for the budget, I'm not asking that question in the budget that says, wait, we just hired somebody, now we need somebody else? Because it was a shock to me and I think many others on council.
I'm sorry, I think I did mention at the last meeting, we really did want to hire two people, but we thought at least bringing one person in at that time would really help.
Yeah, when I think we also said that, yes, we want to see what happens when we bring one other person in and how that changes things. So I don't, there's going to be no evidence in a very short period of time that anything's changed. And I guess I would challenge on something like the addition of Qualtrics software. I mean, it requires next-to-no support because that's complete software as a service. And Max is going to run, create his, create the questions that he wants and send it out and get the reports, and that company's doing everything. I've worked with them a lot. So I understand that there's like nothing from an IT perspective that my team gets involved in in any of the reporting we do because it gets handed over to the people that are running those queries. So that might be an opportunity for others in other areas to start to learn a little bit more about the software that they have to do, that they work with. Because that's very much something that should happen, is it shouldn't just be every time there's a question that your team is getting called because Qualtrics should be providing some level of support. If, hey, how do we do this? Qualtrics should answer that, not you guys. You guys can't be Qualtrics experts.
No, and that's not what the applications engineer would be utilized for. It would be more to tie into, I'm going to reveal my lack of technical knowledge, but into our other databases of information that Qualtrics uses to connect to stakeholder groups. For instance, pulling in all of the employees and categorizing them by departments, and that's going to require integration with IT or resident information or business information.
Someone does a service request and view works or applies for a permit in LAMA. Now, the next day or that evening, we want to pull that data from the databases and say, this person, here's their email, and then it has to go to Qualtrics.
Right.
It's not something that we could embed in the program. We have to create that file to, which means pulling data from a lot of different sources and then creating that file every night. So now we're involved in helping create that list of surveys for Qualtrics to go out and get. And we do, just so you know, we try and push as many people to the vendors as much as we can. And many times, if they have to get on a system, then we're there helping them as well. So I mean, we're helping the departments, we're helping the vendors, and having that other person could really pay some dividends. And I do understand what you're saying about not seeing what the results are of having this other person. But then if you look at it, you know, we wait six months or eight months down the road, it takes another three months to hire somebody, we're a year down the road and we still have a long list of projects. I will say that, you know, and it's something that we're discussing at home, but in two to four years, it might be time for me to leave and retire. So I think at that time, I think it might be a good opportunity to get us caught up and get someone in here that's proficient in understanding these databases and the structure and design of them and be able to help us. And then when I leave, then you can decide at that point maybe, hey, you know what? Maybe we don't need another person.
So the other thing I would add, and again, this is a holistic thing, is having those... What we don't, what we see in these meetings a lot is, hey, we're going to go spend $60 million, we're here in a wastewater treatment plant. So we see the big projects. I don't see the list of like smaller projects that are kind of part of the daily operating to say, hey, these are things we want to get done. And by the way, this was our original start and end date for this, but that's been pushed back two or three years because we don't have the staff. So have that visibility that allows me to make a decision saying, oh, my gosh, I didn't realize we've had 40 projects across the entire city that we've just cannon, because we talk about the big ones. We talk about remodeling City Hall, that got kicked down for many years and finally happened because that's very visible. I think if there's things that are not as visible because we don't talk about them on a daily basis or even a quarterly basis to say, this is what hasn't happened, it's hard for me to make a decision without that information. So that's where I'm at.
I think trying to build that into like our weekly updates to you, but you're right. A lot of times, we're not, we're not sharing information about where we're struggling in there, are we?
Nobody wants to come to the city council and give you guys bad news, let's say that. But in my budget, over the past couple of years, I have mentioned that I've moved projects into next year.
Following years, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, and if you, and we were discussing this at one of our staff meetings about why we have a surplus. Well, it's because departments haven't been able to get to some of these projects. So, I mean, there's signs of it, but we just haven't called it out.
I will say one thing about IT is, you know, we were just having this discussion about, you know, you don't hear a lot about it, you don't want to hear a lot about IT. At my job, we downsized, we basically fired the entire IT department and outsourced it. It's been a disaster, okay? People talk about IT all the time at my place now, and it's never good. Do you want the IT department to be in the background, unknown, because that means they're doing their job or everybody else's job is that much easier because of the fact that IT is so important in everything we do nowadays? I mean, it's just the way it is, so.
And we're asking for that. We're asking for online permitting, we're asking for all the information to be shared between every department. Look at how long it's taken us to get GIS up in every department so that they can all utilize that into what they need to do every day. And that's something I think is really important, is it's not just can we create and do the projects and run the software, implement the new systems we have? How does that make the organization better? And how does that make it a better place to work at? How does that make it a more inviting place to try to replace people when they do decide to leave? Which is going to be one question that I think that's something we also have to think about, is how do we have this department set up so whether or not there's room to move up in it or room to replace people in it, that it's more well-defined? Because if you have two people doing everything instead of four people or five people doing their own specific things that make everything better, it works way better. I mean, I know a lot of people that are in IT that are just pulling their hair out right now, ready to retire, because that's the reality of it, I think. Trying to find people to do it, trying to find time to do it, and trying to find money to do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, I could not agree more that, you know, for us, you know, information's power, right? So the faster we can get your guys' problems up to us and cut the gap of any issue going on, that's what we want to do, right? I'll be the first to tell you that IT is blowing up. Our department will probably rarely get smaller. And so I don't deny anything you're saying, but I also want to acknowledge that anytime something like this happens, whether it's in my business or I think we should here, it's a time to self-audit and kind of, what are these projects? Let's bring them to the surface, throw out the ones that don't matter anymore, free up some space. Okay, now we definitely still need a person. We've brought the facts to the table and it is transparent that, you know, this is just not, and we probably do need the person. I'm saying we most likely do, and I don't deny anything you're saying whatsoever, but it also will help us to see some of these projects because we definitely want people having the best technology. You've stated it, I mean, IT is blowing up, it's a part of everything, IoT, right? You know, the Internet of Things, everything's going to be connected, you know, down the road, but almost already is. So, yeah, no, I mean, thank you for bringing it to our attention. I do agree with Alderman, you're, I mean, it was a little soon, but I, you did mention that there, you know, if you had your way, you'd have two people last time. But I, you know, I would love to see what's waiting in the wings, right? And what this, what the effect is going to be, you know, because we know the cost of hiring folks now, you know, we already went through that exercise. So just doing due diligence, and it's nothing against, you know, your guys' workload or anything like that, so.
We did, we always look at what we're doing, and, you know, our whole department is built on efficiencies, you know, using technology or some other means. And we did start using help desk software this year, which I've shown you guys a little bit. We have tried to use Microsoft Project through Teams to create a list of projects. And that hasn't changed. And yes, we do have a new technician, but that's a completely different skill set than what we're looking for. And they're probably not going to be able to help us with some of these implementations. And I think that's where the problem lies. We want to give people the applications and the support they need, but those skill sets are not really qualified to do that.
Yeah, I would say, you know, my vote, my gut reaction is yes, absolutely. But I would love more info, right, on what these projects are, what we're going to, you know, just to know. And then that way, we can have some focus too as a council of, hey, you know, and I can follow, hey, did that thing ever get done? No, we're waiting on this or whatever, and then we can move that along, so.
And I apologize, I have not given you a weekly update in a while, and it's just been busy with what I've been doing and trying to, okay, do I get this thing running? I just missed a weekly update, I guess next week, so I apologize.
Just to play devil's advocate, my gut instinct is no way 200 grand. But you have a compelling argument. I know you've been running thin for years. I just want to take it out. Yes, you have a need, we need it. Is there a way to run a query as to where we're going to find this 200 grand? That's where my issue is, because we're already taking from reserves more than I'm comfortable with. So that, I mean, I know there's a need there, but there's a lot of other needs too. And where it fits at the bottom and why we're asking about this now, this should have already been built in in some of the other fluff, but where is that? Where can we pull 200 grand out of this budget?
Well, a couple of, this is already in the budget, right?
It is in the budget, that's why I said there's no vote.
This isn't an additional 200,000. And by capturing the 6.5% increase in our EAV, we are still able to keep our taxes at the exact same rate this year. We do have to capture or, you know, add a little bit of reserves to that. But as Peggy stated at our last meeting, she and I are confident that even with the average EAV increase in the future, that capturing that is going to be able to, because you don't want to rely on reserves to cover ongoing expenses. But you can, given your, the trend in the increases in revenues, say that that is what is going to pay for that in the future. And both Peggy and I are very comfortable about that. The other thing is, you could not fund the position, but back down on the expectations, which would be difficult because we're already facing what we saw in the employee survey, you know, what we heard as part of the strategic plan as to initiatives that we want to get done in that strategic plan. The resources need to be available to do those things.
Even with the strategic plan, I don't even know if this person coming in would be able to help for quite a while. It's, there's quite a bit in the strategic plan.
Well, just to add on then to the question of getting more information of these projects, is there a timeline of when we expect? You've got a little back history now with a four-week-old employee. Like, when is he going to get ramped up? And can some of this workload be handled by, like, in four months, wouldn't it be like, oh, maybe we didn't really need this, this guy's a killer, doing more than we could have ever imagined, but we're not even seeing the results of this guy yet? When would we see results and when, what's the timeline of this hire?
So he's ramping up and learning and figuring things out around here, and he's been here about a month. I would say he's a pretty sharp IT guy with a lot of experience, but he's still learning where things are and what things are around here. It's a different environment. I would say, you know, another couple of months, he'll be a lot more proficient. And then the question is, are we still able to handle all the support requests we get with maybe himself, our network administrator? Or do Todd and I still need to get involved? Or do Todd and I still need to get involved? Because Todd and I are the guys who are implementing. These other, other two folks don't have all those skills. Ed is proficient with Laserfish, and he's kind of the only guy who does that. But, you know, it's usually Todd and I working with developers and software vendors with other departments. So if we could get off, you know, not having to do all those support requests, then, well, that would be great. I just don't know if that's going to be possible, because some of the report, or some of the requests that are coming in require software and application support. So, and that's the problem. There's, there's two different skill sets here. And, you know, even bringing somebody in, it's, it's going to take them time to understand our programs. Let's say we do, let's say you, you do approve this position in the budget. Now we have to go out and hire someone after the first of the year. They may not start until maybe, maybe March or so, March or maybe the beginning of April. I know beginning and end of the year for HR and finance are busy, same with us. So depending on when we can get that person in, now it's going to be another, you know, three, four, six months for that person to understand what applications we have, what the databases are, how these systems work, so they can help support them and implement them and update them. So, you know, as we put this off, it just pushes the problems farther down the line. And, you know, now we're probably almost a year out before this person's really paying some good dividends. And I really would like to see that happen sooner than later.
Yeah, one other thing, just on the, on the positive side, I want to say, one thing that just hit me, that we never really seem to be going through the process of replacing people because they don't leave. So, obviously, you've created a good work environment, and that's, that's a positive.
But we know it's going to happen, and, and we are planning for that. I just want to let everybody know that we do have succession planning conversations all the time with all the departments, especially in those where, you know, the, the people have an opportunity to retire in a few years. We're looking at those things.
I think, you know, if, if you do approve the position, great, you know, I'd be very grateful. I know adding a position is not something anyone takes lightly, including myself. That's why I planned on having this discussion. But I, I just feel like if we're not giving the employees the tools and the resources they need, we're not doing our job. And, and I would rather be able to give them the things that make them more efficient, both in the field and in-house with, with some of the applications that, that we already own. I think that makes the city function a lot better.
Yeah, I was just going to make a final thought that I, you know, was thinking about, and that, that is, I do not want this town to go the way of many other towns and organizations that I've worked with where the IT is the afterthought, right? When really, it was at the core of what they were trying to do the whole time. So, you know, again, more of a general thought than anything, but, you know, these things are becoming more and more and more important every day. And so, you know, I think we do have a light IT staff as is, so everyone knows what I thought about the pay. I mean, yeah, blows my mind, Nick, so, but that is what it is. If that's the standard, then, you know, it is what it is. So it's more for me about what are, what are we implementing in the town? What are we giving, right, the tools, not only to our staff, but everything? I mean, you know, it's 2023, almost, if you're not in the new era, age of, you know, you know, having a nice website and having a quick permit process and do, you know, you're getting left in the dust quickly. So, and all of that bears on IT, you know? And, and I think as, as more and more projects happen, as this town grows and blossoms, it's going to be nothing but more technologically savvy. So, you know, to be way ahead of that curve from an intellect standpoint in-house, I think is, is important. So, and I do understand the on-ramp processes with people, but, you know, I'd also love some more clarity instead of generalities, right? Exactly what, you know, and we can take this offline, right?
Yeah. I've got, I've jotted down some projects.
We're all ears.
I'm happy to talk about them, but I don't know if this is a time or the place.
Just, it, yeah, it's, it's not, but more, more specifics in terms of what, what the outcome of said project or said software is, and, you know, that's it. You know, again, information is going to either move us in one direction or the other, and the information is usually facts. We put the facts in front of everybody. A lot of times it's not, you know, we got a lot of eyes or a lot of no's, so.
Any other questions for Howard?
So at this point, I don't know that I hear a resounding no to this, because I think, you know, in my mind, I think we have to keep moving forward with this. And every year, I know there are things that are in the budget that don't get done. And the list, I think, I've seen in the past five years in IT has just kind of been stagnant. You know, it, we got another department in this year, or we got, you know, half of this done or half of that done. We're still not up to where we thought we'd be with permitting, whatever it is, it's because there's a backlog, a backlog of everything else that they have to do every day. And, you know, and there are specialties. I mean, not everybody does this.
So maybe there's not a resounding no, but I'm kind of a not now. I'm thinking that go ahead and budget it, but come back to us in the middle of the year or after the first quarter with, hey, here's what's happened now that we've had this guy in, here's where he's at. I mean, give this guy six months or so to kind of settle in.
A technician?
Yes, to see how that's impacting the department in a positive way. To say, okay, yeah, this is, this is helping. Prove that what we did for you is helping. And then show where, again, hey, this project, I'm not a huge fan of CBAs from a government standpoint, because, you know, building roads, you know, that you don't get your money back on it, but you do get your money back if we're saying we're, we're providing a return on investment on projects that, hey, we want this project and here's why, or here's the intangible benefits of it, and why, things that have gotten delayed, well, why did they get delayed? Why was that choice made? What are the priorities that are driving these things that you're making the choices? So without that, that's where I'm saying I'd rather just go ahead and budget it, but not approve the position until we get some other data.
Unfortunately, and Howard has tried to make this clear, is how different those responsibilities are, that the individual that we brought on.
No, I know that they're different, Laura. I'm not, I know this business very, very well.
I don't think it's going to help us in applications with the help desk person getting more proficient.
I'm trying to show that the person that was hired is providing value to the organization. And if that's not the right person that we're hiring, because they don't have, they're not providing enough value to the organization, then we need to be hiring more proficient people that have a greater skill set, pay them a little bit more, but create their expectations that you're going to do more.
Is this about our new employee? I mean, I think that he's exact, have we given you the impression that he's not where he should be?
No, yeah, so, then I'm not making myself clear. I'm just saying I'm a no, I'm a not now. I just want to see the data that I asked for, like what projects are getting kicked on the road. But I also want to see how this, the person we did hire is improving the organization, because that's a metric that should always be taken into account, that do you still need everybody that you need? I will tell you, my team has downsized because we need technically less people doing things because the software companies do more than my team needs to do. So when I lost somebody for, for attrition, I didn't replace him, because I'm like, then I have a bunch of people around twiddling their thumbs. And I'm not saying that's the case now, but I'm just, so I haven't said, no, and that's what, this happened last time.
Put it into perspective. We, we bought computers way back in the spring, and we still don't have them out. We're going to buy new computers, January, February, but we still have a big stack of them that this gentleman is trying to get out. It's going to be many months before he's caught up with computers to determine whether or not we need somebody or not. That just pushes projects farther behind. New projects come in, beginning with the new budget year. That just puts us farther behind the game.
Well, we aren't talking about a $60,000 a year, $70,000 a year employee, so I do know where the hesitation's coming from. If we're paying somebody 200 grand, I expect some change.
Wait, where, where are we paying someone 200?
Oh, I thought, I thought that's what, that's what Nick had mentioned. Even if it's 100 grand, if it's 96.
No, this, this position is some.
Hold on, it's 96, like the first employee, still at 100 grand. You want, you want to see KPIs, like you said.
We're not, that's not even there where we're offering to pay. In fact, I know when we, when we talked about salaries a few months back, I think we ended up hiring this gentleman, well, I don't really want to say, but.
It's in the compensation. It's, it's right in there with his name next to it, so don't worry about it.
Yeah, it wasn't at the top of the scale, it wasn't at the bottom.
Yeah.
But it, I think the top of the scale was like 75, 78?
The top of the scale was 96, because I remember my jaw dropped. I was like 96,000 for a level one tech.
I don't think that's where it was, was.
Yes, because.
90, 90, oh, might have been 92. Might, might have been 92, but we didn't hire him near that.
We can bring up the scale, but regardless, it's a good amount of money on an employee that needs to make a change. So I, I do understand where he's coming from, and that you have to be able to measure. And I understand it's only been four weeks as well, right? So kind of hard to measure when you're still on-ramping someone, but.
He's only been here for one month, and within the first two weeks, he had a stack of 40 open boxes of hardware that no one was opening before he got here.
Okay, so we've got some boxes open, so.
That is deployment.
That is good.
It is deployment of hardware in our organization.
How many have we deployed?
For people who have been waiting for them since spring.
How many have we deployed?
Howard, I imagine all those have been.
Oh, they're not all deployed yet.
Okay.
We can't imagine. I need to know how many are deployed. We're going to, I mean.
Dan keeps on raising and lowering his hand.
I'm not sure if he's halfway through them, but it's, it's, it's going to take him a few months to catch up on that.
I hope the evidence is there. I think it will be. I think we also need to have it to make good decisions. That's.
Dan keeps on raising and lowering his hand to get our attention. Dan?
I'm, I'm, I'm glad you guys can't see, can't see my video. I promise you, I mean this somewhat in jest, but at the same time, I promise you, if there were two other banking people at this table, this level of in the weeds, we would not be doing, for someone in the finance department, this level of scrutiny on an employee is unprecedented at this table. We hire staff to tell us that they need staff, and it's this type of rhetoric and this type of behavior that has encouraged staff not to come forward when they need staff. I, I'm not blaming anyone.
I don't understand why you can't have evidence to make a good decision. I don't understand.
How long have we been deploy, have we been implementing?
Okay, okay.
How many years?
Sorry, Dan.
How many years have we been implementing Viewworks?
Five or six.
Five or six?
Five or six, I think.
Five or six. We are not yet done with implementation of a major asset management software.
I mean, we, we had issues with, with GIS, because we, we didn't have the resources. We, then we had issues with engineering, with electric, because that position or two positions were out for at least a year. And, and now we are having issues with, with us, trying to move that forward, so.
And the upgrade to the ERP system, how long did that take? Two years?
Two years.
Two years to upgrade our ERP system.
And we're going to probably budget something like that again in 2025. We have to do another upgrade to it.
But these are things that should not be taking that long, but they take that long due to a lack of resources. But it's just a decision to be made. We can wait, and we know how behind we are in our projects, and we're trying to relate that, but we can wait and provide more information to you about other projects that are similarly behind, and hope that in six months we'll be able to do something.
I have no problem giving you guys more information about what we're working on, so you have a better idea moving forward. And if you're budgeting this amount, then we could have a discussion sometime maybe in February or so, if, if you think that's enough time. I just hate to not have it budgeted and stand up here again in six months, and then have these implementations drag out farther than, than they need to be.
My voice was just to say, I don't have a problem budgeting it, but before it gets actually approved, I just want to see more of that information. And then, like I said, like I said at the beginning, it's kind of holistically across all departments, because every department is kind of insinuated, we really need somebody else, we could really use somebody else here, we can, we can use somebody else here. But then it shows up in November, and then that's not fair to us or our residents with information.
So one of the things that's part of the strategic plan is a capacity study. So while an expensive proposition to engage in a capacity study, that will both show you where the gaps are in the organization, and then we can come up with a timeline plan instead of where we're at right now is we get desperate and then we ask. So instead, it's a much better strategically to plan for increases in, as you say, with data and over a timeline, and be able to plan for it financially.
And I think between now and, and late January or February, we can have a list. Howard can show us what's been put off over the last several years, what's coming in the future, what they're working on now, what's going to come in on the budget next year that they're not going to have time to implement. And then we can, with that data, make the decision, do we pull the trigger and do that right now? I mean, I think that's how we should handle it. So I think that would satisfy everybody.
We keep it super high level for folks that don't understand a lot of the technical aspect of, hey, here's Viewworks, this is what it's going to do for us. This is where we're behind, this is what that addition to this program will do for, or whatever it might be, right? You know, but it, you know, just in layman's terms of, you know, here's application, here's effect, right?
And I don't think it does anything good for the organization or any other department when they know they have equipment or applications that's just sitting there, that they can't even get out of the box to get to them, you know, to start using them, not, not even updating it, but just getting the new stuff out there.
Chris?
Just real brief, I'd like to second Alderman Chan's comments and think that this is getting a bit, bit of rhetoric going on here, and.
I actually didn't finish speaking. I'm patiently waiting with my, I'm, if you can picture me as an eighth grader, I have my hand up still, and I'm holding my elbow.
Three minutes.
I said sorry for the record.
Dan, three minutes, the timer just started.
Thank you. I promise you, if there were more banking officials at the table, we would not be in this, in this level of weeds. Most banking terms and, and things are really boring and not meant for the, the layman. We understand things like interest rates. We understand things like trending up, trending down, money good, money bad, the interest, things like that. I shouldn't expect to be an expert in running a restaurant. I don't run one. I look to the people at this table who have more experience at the operations part of running a restaurant, when I have a question on that. When I have an IT question, I have many people in my life that I turn to for, for advice. It is unusual that we have this many people at this table with, with this level of expertise. So I appreciate it, I really do. The fact that we have lawyers at the table, we've had physicists at the table before. We've replaced our physicist with a new physicist. We all come from different backgrounds. What I'm getting at, though, is a larger picture, is that we are sending a message to our department heads and to staff, that this is the acceptable level of scrutiny. I just would caution us, there's a point where it is useful discussion and a point where it is not useful discussion, unless we have the same level of scrutiny for every position that comes before us. And that is not the job that I signed up for when, when I asked to run again. We hired a professional management team in all facets of city work. I have defended every one of them publicly, a lot of them privately, scolded them publicly and privately for, you know, superior or inferior types of work. We even need to trust that we have the right staff in place, that will tell us when they need help or not. And previous councils, not this one, previous councils have set a precedent to condition our department heads and, and the city administrator to be very, very cautious when coming forward to us. So Howard, you are brave to even come forward and even suggest a position, knowing full well that you would be one of the first on the firing line. knowing full well that you would be one of the first on the firing line when it came time to defend that position. If you tell me you need somebody, I'm sorry, we couldn't get someone to you sooner. And I am delighted that you presented this position. You have my full support. I cannot wait until this person is up and running. And on my days off, if they need help opening boxes, I will open boxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just rebut, I would imagine the board meeting at the bank is, there's a lot more scrutiny going on in there than you can even imagine if profits aren't there and if they're pulling millions from reserves. So I would challenge that and I would also just remind everyone that this is the government setup. We are here for checks and balances. If we didn't ask questions, we wouldn't be doing our job. So just want to make that clear. That's why I ask, I know you're the right guy. I support it and, but even with the building department, I've had the conversations with Scott. There is no disrespect. I'm not doing my job if I'm not challenging and asking questions.
And high level interest rate discussions do occur. They do not occur at the chase branch with the bankers. They occur at the corporate level. And so those discussions are happening. We are ultimately those people. But if we want to have a separate discussion on how we hire staff, let's talk about that. Let's not talk about it when we're approving a budget. Let's talk about it before the budget happens, six months beforehand, so that staff can meet us with the policy decisions that we need to make and arm us with the information that we need while the budget is being approved. This level of scrutiny, to have this additional level of scrutiny feels weird. That's all I'm getting at. Trust me, all year long, risk analysis happens and the bank is nimble and can make those decisions, but they have structures in place to do it. And you certainly know that I'm not trying to mansplain or any of that stuff. These things are all in place, but it just feels like we're doing it at the least opportune time. I can recall previous discussions where we've spoken for an hour about $60,000 in expenditures on a piece of rolled concrete and did not spend enough time talking about how we would fund a road budget or a stormwater sewer management. We sometimes have, we discuss things at length when they need it and not at enough length when they do. That's all. And that's a governance issue for later, not a discussion for a budget. But in the interest of moving on, let's just keep those things in perspective with all due respect to everyone in this room. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we could end this with agreement that we should all start these conversations earlier.
Yes, thank you.
You guys.
All right, thanks, Howard. Okay. Next will be item number 20, which is Resolution 23123R, the 2024 annual budget.
And again, we are going to, if I'll answer any questions that you have tonight, but as far as a decision on approval or recommending approval of the budget to the city council, we're going to do that on the 28th and then expect to pass the budget on December 4th. Does anybody have any questions? All of the changes that were recommended last time have been made? Yes?
Thank you. Alderman Serone kind of remarked about this, but as we're pulling out of our reserves this year and you know, you mentioned the EAVs and stuff, do we know how long until we can kind of build it up to where we are at now?
So the reserve, our reserves exceed our policy at this point. And so, you know, what has happened over the course of the last several years is that we've ended up with a couple million more increasing in the reserve because of projects that we haven't been able to get to. So we're hoping by utilizing this, we're going to sort of bring it back to where it was a couple of years ago. Jen?
Can I piggy bank off of that?
Sure.
Just to give you a little bit of history, I've actually tracked the budget of when we have budgeted to use reserves. And when we've budgeted to use reserves, we actually have not actually gone in and taken the reserves. So we've actually built our reserves up from, from 2026, we were down around $7 million and we're sitting at around $18,000, almost $19,000 in reserves. Million, thank you. Sorry, looking at it wrong. In 2020, in 2020, we were expected to, it was budgeted to use $3 million and we actually, we didn't even go into a deficit of using the reserves. So when you're looking at a budget where there's a lot of times it's, it's kind of like when we do a budget at our house, we have what we have as our standard, you know, regular, what we know are hard, and I'm losing the words right now. And then we have our flexible items and that's kind of how this budget works. It's flexible and where, yes, we're expected to go into it. Based on the data that I've looked at, there were only four years that we've actually gone in and used the reserves and it's been under $1 million that we've gone into where we've been budgeted to go into the reserves even more. So where it may be scary saying we're expected to go in and do $2 million, that may not be the case at the end of the year just because of how sales revenue may come in and how expenditures may go.
But we should probably just move the table to December 4th?
Up till November 28th.
November 28th.
Yeah.
I moved the table, Table Resolution 23123R is November 28th.
Could I just interject? This is Peggy's. I apologize for not being there tonight. I had surgery on my broken foot yesterday, so I can't walk. But if there are any other questions, I would like to address them ahead of the November 28th meeting because there won't be very much time between November 28th and December 4th. We can talk about these reserves later if you like, but are there any other questions on the budget that someone had that we can address or research in the next week? Or was that the only item?
I just had a quick question that I don't think we'll have any research to it, just for my own information. Looking at the road diet capital cost, and this is for 2026, there's an additional $900,000 of construction maintenance specified. Is that for the downtown portion of that potentially budgeted ahead of time or is that?
Gary, is that for the engineering phase after?
So that's in the capital, so that's just an anticipated future expenditure. And yes, it would be for what we're calling the Phase 2. So we're doing Phase 1 next spring, which is everything except the downtown area.
And that's mostly just road striping, correct?
Mm-hmm. And then Phase 2 will be not only the downtown area, but also an analysis of intersections and potential intersection improvements. That's all part of the Phase 2, so.
Okay.
As well as feasibility.
What that scope's going to be until the engineering. So we just threw a number out there in the future to let council know that that project's still sitting out there.
Well, the feasibility of that stoplight at Melview, we were going to include that as part of that project.
Part of Phase 2, yeah.
Part of the Phase 2.
Fantastic, thank you.
Others?
And if anybody has any others, make sure we try to get them to Peggy as soon as possible so that they can get it asked and answered and sent out to everybody.
There was the second group of questions that got added today. We had thought that we added them before, but then Alderman Beck asked, are there answers to those? And we discovered that they had not gotten added. So you can see the second set of questions answered. Was that what you were going to say, Peggy?
That was, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
We'll heal up quick so you're ready for the next meeting.
Was there, after I left from the last meeting, was there any further discussion about potentially earmarking any video gaming revenue towards future infrastructure projects to just say that that is what we use that revenue for?
No, but that might be a good part of the discussion next January when we are talking about the video gaming ordinance.
We can do that at any time. At any time, we could say, it doesn't have to be at budget time.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thanks.
And the same thing with the bag fee that also has not been designated.
We have to designate it.
But it's designated to a fund.
We just haven't figured out how to spend it.
I mean, what we're saying is we're tracking it, right? And so it, none of it has.
Decide what to spend on.
Yes, exactly.
What to spend it on.
Exactly.
Okay, we have an open motion out there to table this to the 28th. Do I have a second? Second by melee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay, now we get into the big fun one tonight.
Eight.
Strategic plan.
That's right. Hello, everyone. So I obviously sent this draft to you ahead of time. Really what I am here for today is to answer any kind of quick questions anyone has. The intent is we're going to have a more in-depth conversation about the plan, about the items within it. Because this, as you see it right now, we can't get to everything in here. It's designed that way, to be cut down, to be pared down, to align with ultimately what in here you want us to prioritize. And so that's really the next step of this is getting that understanding from you all is, you gave us your vision of what a successful Batavia looks like. That's where we started. From there, we developed our outcome statements. From there, staff came up with a whole host of actions, which is what you see in the plan, that get us to your desired outcomes. Now what we need you to decide as a council is what are the inputs we're given and which of these activities take priority for you all? So that's really the next stage of this is to understand where your priorities lie within this plan, which activities take higher importance in your minds that you want us to take, seeing across the models of what this activity leads to, how it's measured, what its outcome is, and then ultimately what we expect it to achieve longer term. So that's where we're at right now. There was also some conversation with staff, given the length and the number of activities that we'd like to be able to get to at some point, turning it into a five-year plan as opposed to a three-year plan. The thought is that it also has a nice little marketing point is two five-year plans gets us right up until the bicentennial. That lines up well, kind of allows us to look ahead to the next 200 years of Batavia and kind of putting it that way. It's also just because it turns into a five-year plan, it's still regular updates, regular periodic reporting. Expect that roughly at the two and a half year mark, there'll be a more comprehensive look at, all right, is this still what we want to be doing? Is this still our intent? Is this still our outcome? So that's kind of the thought there. And then the other conversation I want to have with you all is the thought of doing some small group level conversations. Like I said, ascertaining those priorities and ascertaining the top level activities that you want us to be doing within there or whether we want to do that as a special committee of the whole meeting or something like that. So like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions, explain any items, sort of explain what changes we've made, why we've made them. We did combine a few, or we did combine two outcomes, given that when we went through and looked at all the activities, they easily fit somewhere else. So that was just a simplification effort. And then we also just clarified a few things here and there. We removed anything that had to do with what we would call legal mandates. So it's like we had originally put in the plan to ensure safe drinking water. That's a requirement of the law. We have to provide safe drinking water. We intend to do so each and every day going forward. We have, yeah, I'm not going to get into that. But the, anything regarding legal mandates was removed. It doesn't mean that we're not doing them. It's that we are doing them and it doesn't really necessarily belong strategically in the plan. So like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions and I do want some thoughts on small group meetings versus special cow, as well as three-year versus five-year. And like I said, happy to answer any questions.
I like special cow and five-year.
Okay.
I was going to say tonight, I was just looking, there's the fifth Tuesday in January, the 30th. Use that as one meeting so that way, between now and then, you can read it. I've already read it like three different times and I'm still kind of not at peace with everything. But I think it's a good thing for us to try to get any questions we have, any suggestions we have, anything we want to discuss, ready to go and focus on that one night and not bring it up at 10, you know, o'clock or 9:15 or whatever and not be willing to really spend the time it deserves to have to move us forward, especially if we're going to stretch it out to five years. I think that that's important that we focus on that and not, you know, hey, let's try to talk about half of it this night and half of it that night. Or wow, I really don't know that I'm okay with everything, but yeah, let's just do it. You know, I want to take the time and I want this to be right. I want us to all be focused going the same way, maybe not all down the same street, but we're at least going the same way.
Alan?
Yes?
I was at a senior citizen thing last week and this came up, kind of out of the boo at me. Is there going to be like a set of people in a certain age groups or certain parts of town that are going to be invited to come and participate in this discussion? Or can anybody walk in the door and join in on the conversation?
It'd be a public meeting. If it's a special cow, it would have to be a public meeting. You know, it would go through the same process we do anything. It's published on the Cow Agenda. If you have specific folks, I'm happy to share a copy of them. But there's a number of things in here that are designed to sort of build upon our senior citizen efforts. One of the things I know is in there is evaluating how we communicate with them and trying to improve that communication with our senior citizens and with our senior facilities. And so that's something that I know, just in initial conversations, it's involved like talking to resident councils, seeing how they get their information, how they like to receive that information from the city and others. So it's a public meeting, anyone's able to come, obviously. We'll publish that and schedule it and make sure that, you know, I think we were talking about maybe doing a quick press release ahead of time to let people know that meeting's coming up. And then obviously throughout the plan, there's efforts within here to improve our relationship with that community.
Okay, with you, I think as we get nearer to this, as the mayor, I'm going to, maybe at the end of the city council or during my mayor's report, I will make mention of this and say, we're going to have these meetings starting on such and such. And if anybody out there would really like to come and offer their input or their ideas, please feel free to come on down. This is kind of open to anybody. Because there was kind of a sidebar to what I heard was they thought that, you know, I had selected a group of people that were all going to believe the way I did or something and they were going to be the ones that come down and kind of write the script for this thing. I said, nope, that's not what we're trying, we're trying to get into the fiber of the community and find out what people want and how it works and doesn't work and whatever. Well, that's a good idea, but you can't keep us all out. And I said, there's nobody keeping nobody out. So I just want you to know that's kind of a thought that got out there and I don't think there's anything to it, but there's some that are looking for some way that somehow government is closed to them or something.
No, this has been an incredibly transparent and open process. Every discussion we've had has been public. We had an open workshop, the reports, the memos, all the information has been public and shared. Yeah, and this is all based off of the National Community Survey we did. So it's designed to specifically address resident points and concerns. And so again, if anyone has any questions or anything, if you have any residents, reach out to you. Happy to sit down with them, talk to them, explain some of the concepts in here, why we think they're good ideas. Basically where it stands right now is everything in here is something that will get us hopefully toward a desired outcome. Obviously, different activities require different resources. Different activities are going to be supported by more of you or less of you. That's why we're doing the next stage is to actually have that sort of more in-depth conversation about, all right, well, maybe we push this activity off, maybe that only gets 50% of what we want to do. We'll have those conversations. And that's, I'm looking forward to them because I think it really gets to the core of where do you all want to take the city? What do you want to put your resources toward in terms of advancement and larger improvements longer term? So I think that'll be an exciting conversation. I think, yeah, well, unless anyone has any other reasons not to do it, I think we'll probably try to do it as a special cow. And I'll work with Laura and we'll get a date for that and get it all in front of you and whatnot.
My only thought of doing it as a cow meeting is I sometimes wonder if this format is the best way to like directly work with people. There's a word for a meeting where all the community comes in and sits at different tables and looking. What's that word again?
Workshop?
It's like a charrette, that's what I was thinking. I wonder if maybe a format like that might be a bit more conducive.
We can evaluate, either way, we'll do it as a public meeting and call it a special cow. The actual format, the style, whatever, we'll just. special cow. The actual format, the style, whatever, we'll just, we'll, we'll talk about and give you an update. Um, I do like the idea of, um, and we did this with our, our, our meetings that we did, um, to even get to this phase is, um, like small group discussions and then bounce it out to the whole group, um, and sort of build upon ideas. So, um, good point. I'll think about it. We'll, we'll try to think of a, because I agree. I think having just hours of conversation like this isn't exactly conducive to what we're trying to get and what we need to have the conversation about. Um, so we'll, I'll think about that. Good point.
Because there's the different, um, groups with the different, or the different categories with like the difference.
Yeah.
So maybe have like, have them set up.
Each group takes one or two and, yeah, exactly. Um, what we wound up doing with these small group discussions, um, back in the end of September was, um, we'd finish like a conversation and we'd popcorn people around. It's like, all right, three of you get up, move to the next table. You're talking with others, different perspectives. Oh, that person mentioned this earlier. Um, it led to really robust conversation. Um, and it led to people being able to talk about things that they wouldn't necessarily discuss or be as comfortable sharing in this large 14-person group. When you're just kind of three or four people, it's much easier to, not that any of you have trouble speaking your minds, obviously.
Mark?
Yeah, I definitely like the idea of stretching it out to a five-year plan. I mean, I think we need to meet every three years to go over it. But I, I still think that we need to be thinking five, 10, 15, 20 and, and don't limit it because when we put limitations on it, we've got nothing in here that is, that, there's nothing big and impactful that I see in here. I'm surprised it's what's missing if we're talking about safer policing and stuff like that is we're, we're budgeting, looking at a police station, but then we don't have in our strategic, strategic plan that we're going to build a new police station. We don't think, we don't have anything out there that says something big we're doing. And that kind of thing gets lost in a budget because people see, yep, they're going to replace utility poles. Yep, they're going to repave streets. Yeah, they're going to improve the, um, the electric structure, the water plant, those, and then it, so it hides in there. And then I think that's where people, even though it's transparent, it's out there. The strategic plan is a much more concise, easier to read document for people and they're more likely, hopefully we can make it shorter because it's pretty long. Um, that we, that it's concise and, and, or there's bullet points, there's, and there's big things in there. People talk about, you know, not saying build a second bridge, but you know, when they've built other bridges in communities, that's been a 20-year strategic plan and everybody knew that was coming. When they were going to build police stations, everybody knew it was coming. So instead of that last minute, oh, by the way, this is in the budget and it's going to cost you more money, then people freak out.
And it, um, so there's a lot of what I would call impactful things in here. I think that there's a number of things that get us.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean it that way. So I'm sorry if that came across wrong. I guess what I meant was those, the things like that people see. So a police station is something that people see. There's initiatives in here that are great and some of them are in one year, you're going to, you're going to be done.
Exactly.
But some of them, again, when you put in a big thing, you know what, to have, we'll just say, to have a second bridge, that's 20 years from now. Don't not talk about it. Put it into a plan. Say that, hey, between now and 2030, this is what we got, 2030 to 2040, 2040 to 2050. Lay it out there. What are the things that we're thinking of and that people have talked to us about and the community surveys tell us to do, but oh my gosh, that's going to cost a lot of money. We better figure out a way to fund it.
And that's the only way you will fund it is if you say today, we're going to take a nickel and we're going to put it away for every hundred dollars says valuation. And then in 25 years, we can build whatever bridge we want.
Yes.
If that was the reality of what you wanted to do, that's how you sell it.
Exactly. That's my point.
And that's how you plan for it. I mean, I, I think, you know, one right off the bat for me is the river. We talk about all the little projects we're doing along the river. It's going to take us 25 years to do stabilization, stabilization and reutilization of the river within our boundaries, at least that long to do that. Cause we won't be able to fund it.
Well, in 2007, we went out and created a sales tax based on the 19, 20, 20 census that allowed us to go to referendum and have a municipal sales tax. And we went out and told the world, we're going to have this sale, or if you approve this sales tax, the money for the first years will pay off bonds that we're going to issue to build two brand new fire stations. And the fire department had had some very nice runs during that time period. And as I remember, we went out to referendum and that referendum passed like 68% in favor of it because it was the fire department and they were the good guys and everybody liked them. But we'll have that referendum now paid off in, what is, or two more years? Three more years?
Two more years.
Two more years. So that should open up a nice pot of money for the city council then to have some discussions about, you know, is it a new police station we want to build or what is, what is it we want?
If memory serves me correctly, that was also when that's done, that's for infrastructure. That was designated to pay the bonds off and then go to infrastructure.
Right, right.
So that that money would go back into the, the city and, and stay as.
Right, right. Absolutely.
Would not sunset or anything else. It would be used for infrastructure.
As a result, we do have that pot of money that can be used and, you know, I, it would be up to the council who's in office when that all comes together as to what you want to do. But that, that money will be there and I just share that with you because it's, not a lot of other cities have that kind of little, little bonus pot waiting in the wings there that you can do some nice creative thing for your town with. And probably not have to raise property taxes because it's all a sales tax. And our sales tax continues to go up and up and up because of all the new things that we're adding to the community. So it's been a work in positive situation.
I think we're in agreement. We'll bring this back to a cow meeting so that way we can focus on it, do what we're going to do with it, move that forward. So that way we get it out of a draft and into reality. Okay?
If anyone has any other questions, you know, they can hold me. Thanks all.
Thank you. Yeah, really good.
That's something else I wanted to share about the, um, strategic plan is that Max and I were, are looking at software that is, uh, from the same company that does our budget book right now. And we've received a lot of great feedback, both from staff, from you and from residents about, um, what an easy document that is to work with. Um, they also have plan software and their plan software seems to be about as easy to work with as that budget book and, and very affordable. So more on that to come. But we think that would be a really nice way of communicating this plan to everyone, um, for, to keep you up to date on what the progress is on this plan and allow residents to dig down into as much detail as they want into these plans.
Be like a dropdown menu format or something like that, like?
You just keep drilling down as far down as you want to, and then it gives status updates and yeah, charts and graphs. Yeah. It's really nice. Okay.
Great. Move on to item 22, which is project status. Laura?
Uh, yes. Last week, um, I attended an informational meeting with Kane County. Um, they have invited us and other communities within Kane County to join a coalition to apply for a grant under the Climate Pollution Reduction Fund, which is a $4.3 billion federal program with grants given between $2 million and $500 million. And so these are just the beginnings of the discussions about, um, what projects within each community might, um, qualify for, uh, the, uh, to be eligible for this, um, grant and to try to put that all together into one proposal. Um, the, the nice thing about this is oftentimes you hear about these grants and they're like, and the application is due in two weeks and you have only one mountains worth of data to put together in order to apply for it. This one, the timeframe is much longer. Um, I think it's, uh, June of next year when, um, the application is actually due. So we've got plenty of time to work with Kane County and the other municipalities to put together a, a really great application. So hopefully we'll be able to get some items that we're talking about on our, our, uh, strategic action plan, um, added into there. Um, also, uh, we met with the Park District and Hitchcock Group to discuss what's left to be done to complete the master plan for the river corridor in Batavia. Now that we have decided on the concepts for what the, uh, river and pond will look like once the dam is removed. And so we're expecting to get a, uh, draft of that master plan shortly after the first of the year is, is what they say. And, uh, then each body would, um, work through any questions they have, modifications before there is final approval of that. Um, and community and economic development, the permit process study is ongoing. Staff has provided the consultant with various materials as a part of that study and completion of the study is anticipated to be in February of 2024. And, uh, the staff has also begun review of applications for the building inspector, plan reviewer position and also on the part-time administrative position, which I just heard today, we have received 145 applications for the part-time administrative position in CED.
Good luck with that. It's like a whole nother subject vision coming in.
Yes, it is. Um, Public Works, the pedestrian traffic signal, um, at North River Street had a little speed bump there. Um, there is a process by which IDOT needs to come out and do a final inspection on that. And we learned from them that there's a six-week backlog. Once you request the signal to be, uh, inspected for them to come out and do that. However, we did find out that you can contact the manufacturer of the signal and if they are able to come out and do a manufacturer's inspection of that signal, IDOT will accept that. So we've asked our contractor to get in contact with the signal manufacturer to see if we can do that to get this done in a shorter timeframe than six weeks. Um, and also we're working with the, uh, landscape architect that designed the newspaper boy alley archway on a new concept that would be an arch that attaches to the buildings. We reached out to both building owners and they said, send me something to consider. So we're going to move forward with that project again. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions? Okay. Does anybody have any others tonight? Okay. Motion for adjournment. I saw.
Larry is running low.
All those in favor?